Good evening. Welcome to the regular city council meeting Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. Please stand, gentlemen, and remove your hats for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, thanks for everybody being here. And roll call, please.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Judy Ann Fials.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
All city council members are present.
Thank you. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
There are no changes or additions to the agenda.
Fantastic. First thing on the agenda is a little ceremony if Gunnison. Good evening. It's really my pleasure this evening to do something I think we do on an annual basis, and it's to present our volunteer of the year award. And we have quite a few volunteers. We never have enough volunteers, but we always get the job done. And it's our pleasure and honor this evening to honor a young man who has put in 354 hours at our office in business and tourism and visitor's center on his own time. He's also on the youth council. I mean, he's the kind of people, kind of young people that we want to see grow up in Montrose and be a vital part of our community, and they can start right now. Gunnison Clamp, thank you. And we also have, from the Great Outdoors Company on Main Street, a very nice gift certificate to honor Gunnison for all his efforts through our visitors program, our volunteer program, and now with our youth council. Young man, congratulations. And is there anybody that would like to speak to council on anything that is not on the agenda? All right, I will skip that part of the introduction, and we'll move to approval of minutes. City council consideration of minutes of February 4, 2020, regular city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 4, 2020, regular city council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And our first real item of business, hotel and restaurant liquor license transfer. City council consideration of the transfer of a hotel and restaurant liquor license with optional premises at 699 Cobble Drive, excuse me, from Cobble Creek Clubhouse Partners LLC, doing business as Cobble Creek Clubhouse Partners, to the club at Cobble Creek, Inc., doing business as Cobble Creek Golf Community for the consumption on the licensed premises. And Mr. Alcorn, is your microphone on tonight?
Since I was scolded earlier today about never hitting my mic on button.
My wife watches these meetings just almost religiously, and she always tells me, "I couldn't hear the lawyer."
I wasn't.
And I'm gonna teach her your name eventually, but first we need the microphone on.
I was going to sign Kathy out, but yes, Kathy scolded me for not pushing the button, so.
Thank you.
You can hear me, it's all Kathy's fault. Is Mr. Griffin here? Yeah, if you'd come up, please. If you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself and read your address into the record, please.
My name is Randy Griffin, I live at 3848 Grand Mesa Drive in Montrose.
Okay, this is a transfer of a license, so we do not need to address if the needs or the community are being met. So all we're going to be doing is looking at the moral character and fitness of the applicant. Now, have you held a liquor license before?
No.
Have you operated a restaurant before?
No.
And has Mr. Frazier, Ms. Hilton, Ms. Dickinson, or Mr. Fox?
Uh, no.
Okay. So I think this is gonna be where our, most of the conversation is, and there's nothing wrong with that. But there's a lot of detail that's necessary, not only the liquor laws can be complicated. The, when the liquor commission comes down, they check invoices and inventory, and then track the process, all that. And then, of course, probably council's biggest concern is underage service. So first of all, why don't you tell us what's changed at Cobble Creek and why you guys are doing this now, and kind of the big picture of what's going on there?
Well, somewhat of a special circumstance, basically nothing has changed. The, the club has become a member-owned club as opposed to a developer-owned club. Cobble Creek Clubhouse Partners held the liquor license before that transfer. Basically, the staff, myself, everybody involved is not particularly any different than it was. I say I've never held a liquor license before, but Cobble Creek Clubhouse Partners has, and I'm the president at itty, so kind of depending on how you look at it. But basically, as of January 1st, the club became a member-owned club instead of a developer-owned club. Otherwise, nothing has really changed, but the fact that the entity literally did change is what prompted the application.
Okay. But also, the, what has changed is you individuals are now liable for the violations of the law that may be done by employees.
Right.
So liquor law, or liquor enforcement in particular, is gonna be coming after you five instead of the directors. So is the restaurant still gonna be open to the public?
Restaurant is not open to the public at the current time. We have a restaurant deal in the works, and we're hoping that in the next month it will be. Right at the moment, it's just the tavern.
Are you able to talk to council and make sure council is aware that you're as serious about underage drinking and not allowing it as council is?
Well, we do quite a bit of training in relation to our employees about such things. They are all certified, I guess tips is what you call it.
Right.
And so it's a, it's a constant thing in our, our personnel manual and our normal business operation to make sure that those types of things are constantly on their mind. And like I say, none of that's changed, the employees haven't changed, same people. So certainly is something that we're fully aware of and have every intention of doing everything we can to comply.
May I ask a question real quick?
Absolutely, I was about to turn it over.
Is this liquor license for the restaurant and the clubhouse, or just the clubhouse? I'm a little confused. I mean, there, there's two sort of entities out there in, in my mind, maybe I'm wrong legally, but are, is this liquor license for both what, what was it called before?
Creekside.
Creekside and the clubhouse?
It is all-inclusive, yes.
All-inclusive, okay.
I forget, if I recall correctly on the application, there were three or four premises listed, which would be the restaurant, the tavern, the patios, and things all associated with that. The intent here is to transfer the license as it was, so that if the restaurant does reopen in a month or two, that we'll already be up and running and ready to go. But yes, it's all-inclusive.
Yeah, there are five different premises.
Okay, my bad.
When we're speaking to the premises, does that also include the golf course itself?
Yes, I believe that's paged, or exhibit two. Barbara's looking at it right now, if you flip up that one page.
I don't have that.
Is that in our packet or?
I don't have any of this in my packet.
The premise maps usually, are they in the packet? They're usually not. So, yeah, that's the.
Okay, that's where the confusion is, okay, no problem.
So I can buy a beer at the golf clubhouse and then take it in my cart and go play golf with the beer?
Yes, you can also buy, you can also buy a beer for the bev cart that routinely serves the golf course.
Okay.
So the golf course itself is one of the premises?
Is a premise, right, right.
Okay.
Have any of the five individuals listed here been to our liquor service training class?
Not to my knowledge.
I would assume.
I know that one of the five was in the packaged liquor business for several years in Colorado, but beyond that, that's all I know.
It would certainly be, I think, our concern that none of the five directors listed here have been, and I would certainly hope that you would attempt to come to our classes. I think if you're gonna be in charge of it, even though you have somebody running it for you, there should be some understanding of those requirements.
I agree with that. I have concerns that I really don't think the five of you are gonna be overseeing your servers during all open hours. So who's going, who's actually gonna be the person that oversees all of your alcohol servers?
Well, first of all, I'm the general manager, I oversee them now.
There is a general.
I've overseen them for the last three years and still am, so I would dispute that just a bit. We do have a person who is designated as the tavern manager at the moment, and she has intentions of coming to the class, I believe is being held here in a couple of weeks, something like that. She has served in that role in other places, but I don't think it's appropriate to say there's no supervision, because it's the same supervision there's been the last three or four years, and I'm there and I'm about 20 feet from the tavern in my office, so, yeah, I believe there is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were with the homeowners association. You actually have an office there?
No, homeowners association has absolutely nothing to do with this. This is the club at Cobble Creek. It's a, the, all the common amenities out there were transferred to the club, which is not literally the homeowners association, completely different. It basically was transferred intact, was converted to a member-owned club.
Thank you for that clarification.
But it sounds like the management has stayed the same, it's just we've moved from one legal entity to another, the personalities and individuals are still the same.
That's exactly right, and that's what we tell the members out there, is that the only real difference, as you'll notice, is the check you write every month to a different entity. Otherwise, you won't know the difference walking in the door.
Okay, that, that's, I think for council, important. I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. I think city clerk had something to add.
So we do have an alcohol server training scheduled for March 5th, and the tavern manager, Misha, called me today and signed up several people.
Fantastic, great. Any other questions from council? We're sort of getting out of order here, but I'll get us back in.
I have one.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to know what your policy would be, let's look at, say it's the restaurants open again, and, and so I come in with my wife and a couple of good friends, and bring my 20-year-old grandson, and I order a bottle of wine and ask the server to put glasses around the table. What, how would you handle that? What would happen?
Well, it obviously is up to the servers to determine if they think there's a, there's a question with that. An example you gave, there's probably four people at the table that there is no question about, and there's one person that there is, and so if she was asked to bring five glasses and a bottle of wine, then the policy would be for her to check the ID of the fifth person.
Okay, I think that's real important. I, you know, I mean, in social environments, sometimes we.
I agree.
We forget, so.
Lines get blurred, but right.
Has Cobble Creek ever had a violation, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, good, thank you.
So at this time, the packet is in order, and the, the staff is ready for the council to vote on it. You have up to 30 days to make your decision, or you can vote on it yet tonight?
I would invite anybody that would like to come up and speak in support of this to come up now. I would invite anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this to come up now. Seeing none, I think that we can proceed. If there are any other questions, we'll take those. If not, I think we're ready for a motion. This is not a hearing, we just needed to accept public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a, a motion to approve the transfer of a hotel and restaurant liquor license with optional premises at 699 Cobble Drive from Cobble Creek Clubhouse Partners LLC, doing business as Cobble Creek Clubhouse Partners, to the club at Cobble Creek Incorporated as presented.
I'll second that.
And please vote. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it. And number nine, ordinance 2494, second reading. City council consideration of ordinance 2494 on second reading, an ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado repealing and replacing Title III, Chapter VI of the Official Code of the City of Montrose regarding pre-treatment program regulations for industrial users. And David Brees, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, tonight is the second reading of the ordinance changes dealing with the industrial pre-treatment program. We've discussed this two weeks ago, and, and haven't had any public comment, public information or public, you know, comments on the, the changes, which we didn't anticipate, because as part of these ordinances, they're pretty much changing in order to meet the EPA's regulations and the language required in the EPA. One thing I did want to point out, in the, the memo that was attached in there, we had put in a schedule in there, which we had said we were gonna have the second reading on March 3rd because of a 30-day comment period. I was corrected by EPA that that is their, they have a 30-day comment period after we approve everything, and that that wasn't included in this, that it didn't require us to have a 30-day comment period in addition to that. So that was my mistake in that, and we're on the agenda for a second reading if the council was so desired and so inclined to approve tonight. With that, I'll take any questions.
Let me open up a hearing, and council, any questions? I mean, council has been over this, I think at least once, twice. At work session, we've looked at it intently, it's very technical, and.
You have to do it.
Yeah, and we gotta do it, it's, and.
So just one comment I want to bring to people's attention again. If I'm not mistaken, this only affects one business in Montrose?
Well, it, there is, there is only one business that has an industrial pre-treatment program.
Right.
Industrial pre-treatment permit through us.
Okay.
This additionally does affect other businesses that have like grease traps and that, in solidifying what our common practice has been over the last six, seven years and stuff. So it requires them to use best management practices for maintaining and operating those, those systems. And it kind of puts some regulations in place to, to enforce, give us the enforceability of that.
Okay, that's good for everyone to know, thanks. Any other comments from council?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just confused. I'm to the page in the packet that has the proposed timeline. Am I on the wrong thing, on number, on page 19 in the packet?
No, that was, that was a timeline that we put together at the work session when I was under the understanding that we were required to have a 30-day comment period.
Okay.
That's after we submit it to EPA, and so rather than us delaying the second reading out until March, we are able to approve the second reading tonight if the council so desires, and that would just expedite that 30-day comment period moving on to EPA.
So what was the date of the first reading?
It was two weeks ago.
So.
Yeah.
Two, four?
Any other questions from council? I wanna make sure council's finished. And nothing from the community. Zach, glad you're here, I think this is the first meeting you've attended so far, welcome to city council. And my understanding is you just hustled from the swimming pool to get here, and we appreciate that kind of dedication. I, I'm sorry that I didn't, I don't know.
He wasn't here, I wouldn't wait.
Okay, he wasn't here for the, okay. But it's so nice to see you tonight. I'm not gonna put you on the spot here, council's discussed this. I'm gonna guess you might not have any questions about this, so if you do, go ahead, but, okay. But thanks for being here, that's a lot of dedication again. Young man from Montrose High School, he's on the swim team, he's on our youth council. These are the kind of kids that are busy, 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 and they learn to do time management right now. Thank you for being here. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2494 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And Resolution 2020-03, city council consideration of Resolution 2020-03 authorizing the city of Montrose Police Department to file an application for a Victims of Crime Act, FOCA, grant through the Colorado Department of Public Safety, Division of Criminal Justice for a two-year grant totaling $69,090 for annual facility dog training at $700 total, $350 per year to cover lodging mileage, two-year lease of a victim services vehicle at $14,390, which is $7,020 per year, and the $300, $350 return fee, $54,000, which is $27,000 per year, for a 4.09% of the full-time base salary of the victim advocate position for the 2021, 2022. The grant requires $17,273 total cash match or $8,637 per year. The resolution also authorizes the chief of police to act in connection with the application and to provide such additional information as may be required, and authorizes the city manager, chief of police, and finance director to sign the grant application documents. And we have Matt to talk to us.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for letting me be here to talk about this. As you know, Chief Hall's under the weather, so I'll be talking in his absence about this, but as this, in the minutes reads, that's pretty, that is accurate as to what this grant does for our operation. As you know, victim services is a crucial component of any law enforcement agency, and it's dictated by the Victims' Rights Act. So Chantel Bainbridge is our victims' services coordinator, and she does an amazing job. And to my understanding, the funds that we're seeking in this grant cycle are only $450 more than what we requested for the last grant cycle. So she's not only kept an eye on what she needs to perform her job at a high level, but she's also kept an eye on fiscal responsibility, which is definitely appreciated by us. So unless anyone has any questions, what was just read narrates this perfectly.
There's a lot of numbers there, and I think at one point you said 4.9% and not 49. And I just, I just wanna make sure that the record reflects what's in our packet.
49.09 is what I'm showing, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of numbers.
So almost half of the full-time salary?
That's correct.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from the community? Zach, anything you'd like to say? You come pet the dog and walk him around the police station, and that could become part of youth council's obligations.
Take home, take home the animal like back in first grade when you had to take the hamster home or something?
We're liking this. Only this is probably a big German shepherd, or what are we, what are we getting? Do we know?
It's a black lab, yeah.
Black lab.
Beautiful.
Oh, that's even better, nice.
We all get to come meet him, or her? We're doing that in a very structured way, I think Chantel has.
I think that was a no.
I guess so. No, no, actually, she, she showed me a handbook today about a training regimen, it's almost like a police training program for the dog, which is pretty cool, and it does, when she's acclimating it to folks, it has to be done in an incremental way so the dog doesn't get overwhelmed and exhausted. So that actually is a thing, but I'm sure.
I'll behave myself.
Yeah. It gets written for people, yeah, never mind, yeah.
This is entertaining, but I would entertain a motion.
I wanna make a comment first.
Excuse me.
I've stated this openly many times, but I just wanted one more time to say how crucial I think this victims' advocate position is. The people that I know in Montrose who have needed to use her services have just, has been an extreme amount of help to them to get through their problem, whatever their problem is, but then Chantel also has a great personality to go along with that.
She does, and if, if I may add something, you definitely hit the nail on the head. Her services are crucial, like I said, to our overall operation, and often people don't understand that when we do go to a call that involves a victim of a crime at any time of day or night, she's on call, so she does respond out to scenes when requested, to inform people very specifically and very knowledgeably about the court processes they move forward, which is a lot of times necessary for people to actually feel comfortable. So it's, she adds a very, very specific dynamic to our operation that helps our victims more so than we can even put a price on, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-03 as presented.
I'll second it.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Resolution 2020-04, city council consideration of Resolution 2020-04, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for the Restore Colorado Grant Program with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, authorizing the city manager to execute the grant contract, and authorizing city staff to act on behalf of the grant agreement. And we'll hear from grant coordinator Kendall Kramer, please.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, city council. Tonight before you, I have a resolution authorizing the filing of a grant application with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. This is a grant application for the Restore Program, which is a new partnership that exists between Colorado Outdoors, or excuse me, Great, excuse me, let me go back, Great Outdoors Colorado, the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, Gates Family Foundation, Colorado Department of Natural Resources, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, and Colorado Water Conservation Board. They have pulled their resources together to fund larger projects, and this is the pilot year of this program, known as Restore, Restoration and Stewardship of Outdoor Resources. Again, this is a grant application, we meet the criteria, they have several funding areas that they're looking at, we fall under the river corridors, riparian areas, and wetlands. This grant would be used to offset or reduce the costs of the Uncompagri River Improvements Project, which is the river restoration project that is slated to begin this fall here on the Uncompagri. This, once again, a pilot program, this year they have approximately $2.5 million. They're anticipating to fund approximately six to 12 projects. They're looking for projects that are ready to go, which ours is, it's 70% design, and recently we selected the contractor for that project. The minimum request of grant, grant applications is $100,000, therefore we're seeking $400,000. Really excited about this program. The grant application is due next week. This program was just announced about a month ago, which is why it was brought to today at work session, and is brought here tonight. So if there's any questions that I didn't answer, please, I can take those now. Thank you.
And any questions from council? Comments from, or questions from the audience? Zach, I, you probably don't have some background, but if you wanna say anything, or, okay. But I'm gonna give you a turn later for Rock the Rec, just in case the wheels aren't turning yet, I will ask you about that, and I should've said something earlier, but I'll tell you now. You got like five minutes, don't worry about it. And I would entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-04 as presented.
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And we move on to staff reports. 2019 Annual Grant Report from grant coordinator Kendall Kramer, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again, City Council. Here tonight to present to you the 2019 Annual Grant Report. I began last year providing a grant report to the council to bring them up to speed or to keep them in the loop on the amount of grants that we get and on the projects that we're going for. This is also in an effort to be transparent with the community on how we are using our revenues and leveraging revenues. Probably not. Thank you, Shani. So just a little bit of review and background. In 2018, we created the Grant Management Policy, which provides a framework for the type of grants that we go after. This policy was promulgated into the city's regulations and once again provides that framework and makes sure that the grants that we go after align with city policies and the priorities of city leadership, including the council. And so this Grant Management Policy, again, outlines the process of partnering with other organizations. We're approached on a fairly regular basis to partner with organizations and to sponsor grants or to serve as a pass-through entity. We've done that a lot on community development block grants. So it kind of outlines that process and how we evaluate joining or sponsoring those applications. And also goes over the general regulatory and administrative requirements, outlining the requirements of staff as well as city council. City council's role in grants is to consider the submission of applications over $50,000 and to commit matching, or to consider committing matching funds over $50,000. Grants below that amount don't have to go to council. Sometimes we do bring them to council if they're particularly important to the community and what they do. And then it also, the role of city council is to authorize the city manager to execute grant agreements and to act, to allow staff to act on those grants, if that makes sense. So, again, why grants? Why does the city pursue grants? It's because they are worthy pursuit. They offset the cost to provide services and to complete capital projects. The city has been the beneficiary of millions of dollars in grants over the past decade that have funded a variety of projects, including recreation projects, historic preservation, police department initiatives, and other community projects. I took this picture off of our adoption website from the animal shelter, and this is Ace, who, as of last week or the week before, was available for adoption. The animal shelter is a beneficiary of the grants that we go after. And so that's just one example. And I thought Ace was a cute dog as well. So again, grants offset the cost to provide services and to complete capital projects. And they are a way to recapture tax dollars that have left our community, both state and federal tax dollars, and bring them back to invest them here in Montrose. 2019 was another successful year. We received a lot of grants. This is a pretty lengthy list, and all these grants are explained in the actual grant report, which will, if not already, be available on our website. But again, receiving a lot of grants for public safety, economic development, environment and recreation, animal well-being, pedestrian connectivity. Of course, the crosswalk is one example of that that was recently finished. Tourism, public health, that big, the public health grant listed there, $267,000, $267,450. That is the Community Development Block Grant that we served as a pass-through entity for the Center for Mental Health. And then historic preservation. Some of the other things up here on this list, quite a few grants for the Opportunity Zone prospectus and marketing that prospectus, creating that prospectus, the video that went along with it. $500,000 for the River Restoration Project that was awarded in 2019. And then a number of other smaller grants on that list that we're very much appreciative for. Police Department grants, sorry about that, totaled about $351,000. And so we received quite a few grants, again, for the police department. For, over $42,000 for the Peace Officer Mental Health Grant Program, which will provide peer support to our officers, as well as a co-responder vehicle, which is on order, which we should, should receive sometime this spring. There's been a back order on that vehicle, but should be on its way. We also received over $150,000 in gray and black market marijuana enforcement grants for, to prosecute and to investigate illegal marijuana in our community. And then again, referring to Matt, we also received those funds for the Salary for Victims Advocate, which is a very important role. I should also note that there's a lot of departments within our city that apply for grants. I'm not the only one that works on grants. There's a number of individuals at the police department that are tasked with doing this because they're good at it, and that these are, these are repeat grant applications. And I do step in when they have questions or need my assistance. But I do want to recognize that there are a lot of people, a lot of staff that work on grants, not just myself. And they're very important to, to the city in capturing and securing these grants. So just a side note on that. So this is the amount of grant funding that was awarded in 2019, $1,245,233, give or take a couple cents, supporting approximately $2.3 million. That $2.3 million is the total of the projects that were completed or that will be completed. When I say awarded, these are grants, again, that have been awarded. Those funds don't necessarily mean they have been received yet because those, those projects don't, aren't necessarily implemented in 2019. Sometimes there's design work that has to take place, there's procurement. And so this is the amount of funding that we should be receiving. We've been awarded. We've received grant award letters from these different agencies, if that makes sense. Speaking to partnerships, this year, our major partnership was with the Center for Mental Health on a Community Development Block Grant. We secured $267,450 for that project with the awesome help of Janie Sorenson and the staff over at the Center for Mental Health. And this was a grant to replace the roof and the HVAC system on their new crisis walk-in center on Cascade. It was, it's, the project should be wrapping up here soon. It's underway. So that is another example of capturing funds, securing federal funds, and bringing them back to our community. It's federal funds that go through the state government and funnel down to our local community. And we've partnered with a lot of other community, community organizations over the years. This is the, the main one that we partnered with in 2019 on that. Looking ahead to the year of 2020, which we're already in, we just, actually, about a couple hours ago, submitted a grant application on behalf of the Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club to secure $600,000 for their new facility. So we're looking forward to that. We should have an answer, I believe, sometime this summer, maybe June. We're also, next week, submitting two grant applications, a fishing as fun grant application, as well as the Colorado Restore application for the Uncompagri River Improvements Project. And there'll be a number of other grants, I'm sure, a lot of police department grants along the way. And we're also wrapping up some open projects. Of course, you know the Connect Trail is open to the public, but we will be finishing that out in the terms of grant world, where you have a project closeout, make sure all the dots are, are put on there and Ts are crossed and all that. Make sure everything is in compliance with the program. The Woodgate Trails apartment complex, which we, in 2018, I believe, secured $500,000 for that project. As you're aware, that building is finished, so we are in the process of closing that out. There'll be a public hearing in the next month or so to close that project out. And then the Certified Local Government is another one with the Historic Resources Survey Plan that's underway for our Historic Preservation Commission. So those are just a couple of grants that will be wrapped up in 2020. So, again, another successful year in 2019. It's a team effort. Again, with a lot of staff working with Shani on the finance side, city manager, city manager's office. Really, I work with every department, and a lot of departments provide information and apply on grants on their own behalf. So, thank you. I can take questions. I kind of went on a ramble there, but.
Kendall, you said that we received $1,245,233, or will be receiving, but money we filed for this year. Do you know how much, all that money goes into our budget, I assume, the general fund? Is that?
For the most part, yes.
Okay, so my question is, does that show up as revenue in our general fund? Because I want the public to understand that there is money, over a million dollars, every year, it seems, at least since Kendall's been here, that goes into our general fund. It shows up as revenue, but it is not local tax dollars. And it's very, very important to our citizens out there that you understand, when you look at the budget, that not everything under revenue is tax dollars. Some of that is grant money, and that needs to be understood and clearly communicated to our public.
That's correct. And, and, and as well, the expenditure is budgeted. So the full amount of the expenditure is part of the expenses, and then the revenue is recognized as revenue in whichever fund. Occasionally, we get grants for water or sewer, so those would go in those respective funds.
Thank you.
Would all of these grants that are specific to our police or to public safety go into our public safety sales?
Correct.
Public safety fund? Thank you.
And thank you. Excellent report, and thank you what you do. You really add to the quality of our community without spending our community's tax dollars. And that's, you just couldn't ask for anything more. Thank you.
Yeah, really, it really stretches our, our tax dollar.
Absolutely, absolutely. But the community needs to understand that when you see all of a sudden, wow, you've got $1.2 million in your budget, you must have done something with the taxes. That's not accurate. And, and we are, we know that there's a misperception out there, and city council understands it's one of our responsibilities to make sure that our community understands how we collect money, how we spend money, and we are very fiscally responsible.
I think also, some of those grants that we've helped other people with flow into us and back out through us, so it does show up that way also.
Absolutely.
Yes, that's correct. So one thing I should note, like, if you go to our budget, you're not going to see this $1,245,000 perhaps in one fiscal year. It's going to be divided up, because some of these grants are on a reimbursement basis. For example, the Community Development Block Grant for the Center for Mental Health, they have to pay those invoices first. They submit those copies of the receipts and the invoices to the city. Then we submit those funds, or excuse me, submit those to DOLA, and DOLA reimburses us for that. Then we issue a payment to the Center for Mental Health. So it's all dependent upon the implementation of when the project's actually done. So that's why I try to break it up, looking at my grant log spreadsheet. These are the amount of funds that we've been awarded and should be coming to us, based on the grant award letters.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And on to Sales Use and Excise Tax Report. Finance Director Shani Wittenberg, please.
Good evening. So this is the December 2019 report as compared to 2018. City sales taxes was collected at 3%. Retail sales tax is at 5.2% in December. Construction use tax down 8.8%. Use and auto use tax down 20.3%, with total collections up 3.5%, and a positive budget variance of 3.4%. And this is for December. Year-to-date retail sales tax is at 5% or approximately $790,000. Construction use tax down 15.2% or $82,000. Use and auto use tax down 8.1% or $113,000. Total collections up 3.3% or approximately $595,000. Positive budget, budget variance of 7.4% or $1.273 million. More was collected in 2019 than was collected in 2018. Montrose Recreation District, back in 2014, the voters allowed us to increase the sales tax 0.3% to fund the Community Recreation Center. In December, we collected $182,078, or 4% more than we did in December of 2018. Year-to-date, we've collected $1,843,046, or 3.2% more than we did in 2018. Excise taxes are added to the sales tax, 0.9% for hotel and 0.8% for restaurant. In December, hotel excise tax is up 2.2%, restaurants up 10%, with total collections up 9% for December, and a, a negative budget variance of 3.2%. We anticipated about $3,000 more in December than we received. Year-to-date collections, hotel excise tax is at 14.2% or $14,000. Restaurant excise tax is up 16% or $65,000, with a total increase of 15.7% or $79,000, and a positive, but positive budget variance for the year of 18.3% or $90,000 more was collected. Retail sales enhancement, this is the 2% that the city retains from the vendor's fee. In December, we collected $30,973. It's actually down 15.9% from December of 2018, and that's due to a large retailer not remitting on time. In order for this amount of money to be collected, the, all the taxes have to be remitted by the 20th of that next month. Year-to-date, we've collected $363,406, or an increase of 14.4% or $46,000 more than we did in 2018. With that, I'll take any questions you all may have.
So when that retailer does remit their taxes, is that, do we go back and adjust December, or will that show up in January of 2020?
They actually remitted the taxes, and it was reported in this report. So all of those taxes from, that we collected in January and February will be accrued back to 2019 as revenues for 2019. So we've collected the tax, and this report reflects it. Otherwise, that retail sales tax number was a negative 13.8%. So their numbers are reflected in the report, but the retail sales enhancement, that money is lost. That 2% will never move from sales tax to retail sales enhancement.
When a, when a business is late in filing, is there any kind of late fee on that?
Yes, there are penalties and interest applied. Correct.
Thank you.
Shani, I'd like to ask a question, and I'm sorry, I know I'm kind of doing this by surprise to you. I keep getting comments from people about all the construction that's going on in Montrose. Everywhere we go, we see new houses being built, some new businesses, et cetera. So why is our construction use tax down?
So it's, depends on what happened the year prior. So if we issued a big building permit for some non-residential building that went up, then all these little houses, they just don't add up to that large commercial building that may have gone up or had a remodel done. So it's definitely not something that every month we have building. So if we have a dry winter, we might see more building permits pulled in December than we may in a wet winter. So compared to the year prior. And then if we, if somebody pulled a big permit or several permits in one year and then none in the next year, then we're going to see that as a negative.
And so some of this building that's happening right now, maybe those building permits were pulled earlier. They weren't pulled in December. They were pulled back in November when we were up 48%.
Correct.
So it varies. What we see is not actually when the paperwork happened.
Construction use tax is actually pretty, yeah, it, you are seeing. So what was pulled in December is what's reported on the December report. It's not lagging like sales taxes. What we collect in December is reported as, as a December, on the December report. So, but you may see that a permit was pulled in November, and they didn't start construction until December. You're correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on December? Then fourth quarter budget review, please. Shani?
All right. So we like to do these in conjunction with one another, being that we finished out our December sales tax collections. Then the budget report is basically done at the same time, just to kind of keep confusion to a minimum. So this is the fourth quarter ending. So this is the fourth quarter ending, December 31st. Unaudited numbers, of course, there's several adjustments that are still being made, audit adjustments. But basically, the major funds, like the general fund, we've collected 101.9 percent of our revenues, and only 97.4 percent of the expenses have been expended. Sales and use tax, like I just reported, is coming in favorably for us for the year at 5 percent, and a total at 3.3 percent up from 2018. The capital projects that were in the budget are mostly complete. There's a few that are, you know, carrying over to 2020, such as the Connect Project, just a few things that need to be completed there. And then you can see the enterprise funds, the water fund, sewer fund, trash and recycling, even the golf course, their revenues are up, you know, 100, over 100 percent of what we projected. And then their expenses are there in that second column, and this is all in the packet if somebody at home wants to follow, less than 100 percent spent. So, everything looks to be very favorable and in line. So, any questions you may have on that report, I'd be happy to answer.
Seeing none, I think we'll move on. Am I correct? I don't want to cut anybody off. PIO Report, Public Information, Bill Bell.
You're on, Zach.
So, the Youth City Council is working really hard. We have a few upcoming events. Rock the Rec for Teens is coming up on March 6th. And then we have another one planned after that. So these events are just kind of to, for, just for fun, to help teens kind of come to a safe place where they can enjoy, enjoy themselves. And then also, we have a Habitat for Humanity Build Day coming up in April, April 25th. So, yeah, exciting stuff.
You guys are doing a great job. Every single person, I think, on Youth Council this year has really contributed, and we're looking forward to see what you do with Rock the Rec in March. You were very successful several months ago, and I just got to bet that you're going to be even more successful. So, congratulations. And that is, that's more than just providing a fun place for kids to go. It's a safe place, it's off the streets, it's, it's the kind of program that we want to see our kids do and, and be involved in. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Your poster was very inviting.
Thank you.
You're really, you look at the poster and you immediately know it's something that's going on for kids, it's going to involve sports.
Uh-huh.
So, I liked the poster.
And, just kind of a side note, the Rock the Rec will be kind of an art and sports. That's the planned theme, so.
And I think your use of social media is, is, is really good, and I see that stuff, and I know a lot of other people do, so. It's, it's great for you guys to let the entire community know what you're doing. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
And with that, I guess we'll go to council comments.
I have just one small comment, and you're going to be so surprised at this. Kendall mentioned the Woodgate Trails project, and it reminded me that yesterday, we walked on the new concrete trail that goes through the Woodgate Trails property. And so it connects that housing development that's just north of Woodgate, of Vista San Juan and all of those. It connects it over with Ogden Road and the Recreation Center. And I thought it was delightful. I actually walked from the Recreation Center all the way through the in-town trail to Lions Park, over to North Ninth, and back on the Connect Trail. It's 10 miles, by the way. But that was great to find that new section of trail, because I didn't know that was going to be part of the plan. Thank you.
So I just wanted to mention, the REC district is sponsoring an indoor triathlon that I thought was pretty cool. It's Friday, the 28th of February, and all proceeds go to the foundation, so I think it's a neat opportunity to have some fun and support our, our REC Foundation. So you have to register by February 20th. That still gives you a few days, I guess.
The city has a team. Councilors are welcome to join it.
Fantastic.
I believe Chelsea Rostie is heading it up.
Is she? All right. Great. Anyway.
What event are you, sort of assumed you, you must be one of the eventees, is that?
Dr. Bynum isn't letting me have any fun.
Thanks for turning on your microphone.
I, I came to our council meeting from parent-teacher conferences at the high school. I know across our school district this week, our parent-teacher conferences, I know those are really long days for all my friends who are teachers, so I just want to thank them for their time and for being great for our students. So shout out to teachers, enjoy your long weekend coming up.
But more important for the parents, make sure you get to Parent-Teacher Conference. They're very important. Your children's education, I know, is important to you. The high school is tonight. I know some of the elementaries are going Wednesday. I don't know if all the schools are going Thursday, but traditionally, Thursday night is also a late night. And we're talking that, that the high school conferences go till 8 o'clock tonight, and I think in the different schools across our district, teachers are there till 8 o'clock in the evening so that parents have the time to come and hear about their child's education. We've got a first-rate school system in this community. So please, parents, do know that it's Parent-Teacher Conference, and the teachers look forward to you being there to talk about your child. So make sure you're there. Thanks. And with that?
With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
See y'all later. Thanks for coming. Missed my 20 minutes.